Hi, I'm Candace Malcolm and this is the Candace Malcolm Show. I hope everyone had a wonderful Labor Day long weekend. That's it, folks. Summer is over, back to school. Hopefully you're getting your children into a routine. It's always a bit of a relief to get the kids back on schedule and busy with school. I want to talk about an interesting development, a very good development from Pierre Poliev and the Conservatives. This episode today is sponsored by Mackamie College and a little bit more on them later. So Pierre Poliev is proposing a stand on guard principle for self-defense. He is talking about bringing in something like castle law. This is a huge area of discussion in Ontario. So much crime, so many terrifying examples of home invasions. I can't imagine anything more frightening and more scary than a criminal gangster breaking into your house in the middle of the night. And I will tell you that if anything like that ever happened to me, I would use the full extreme extent of my abilities to defend myself and my family, and so would my husband. And the idea that Canadians often get charged for defending themselves in their home is outrageous and ridiculous. So it was great to see Conservative leader Pierre Poliev advocating for a change to the criminal code that would allow Canadians to defend their families inside their homes. It is very ridiculous that this isn't already a law, but I want to play this clip of Pierre Poliev in Brampton on Friday announcing a proposed amendment saying, "Your home is your castle and you should have the right to defend yourself even using lethal force if necessary." Let's play that clip.
Conservatives are standing here today based on the principle that your home is your castle. We're calling on the government to introduce and immediately pass the Stand on Guard law. Our amendment instead will change section 34.2 of the Criminal Code to say that the use of force, including lethal force, is presumed reasonable against an individual who unlawfully enters a house and poses a threat to the safety of anyone inside.
100% agree with Pierre Poliev on that one. Now, Canada's Attorney General, Liberal Minister of Justice Sean Fraser jumped in. First, he shared on X a little small clip of Poliev there saying, "Using lethal force if necessary." Yes, if someone is breaking into your house and they have a weapon and they may be willing to use it on you and your family, you should be able to use lethal force to protect yourself. So he took a little clip of Poliev saying that and then underneath he writes, "This isn't the Wild West. It's Canada. Canadians deserve real solutions that make us safer, not slogans that inspire fear and chaos for Poliev's political survival." Well, actually, Sean Fraser, it's in part due to your time as Immigration Minister. You flooded the country with not the high-quality immigrants that Canada is used to getting, but just anybody who wants to come. So we have millions and millions of people in our country, many of them who shouldn't be here in the first place, contributing to the crime wave. Now, your Attorney General, a large part of the problem is because of your governance, individually, you, Sean Fraser, you, the things that you have done to our country and broadly speaking, the government that you're part of, including the true government and continued now under Mark Carney. And so, yes, Canada does feel a little bit like the Wild West. So saying that it is the Wild West and it's Canada on Friday, that didn't age very well because the big story that came out over the weekend is that, yes, Canada does feel very, very much like the Wild West. Here in Vaughan, just a suburb outside of Toronto, as Joe Wilmington writes, "A father was fatally shot in front of his children in the middle of the night in his home, in his house." He was killed during a home invasion early Sunday morning. Abdul Alim Faruki, 46, was merely asleep in his Vaughan home with his wife and three children. Armed robbers broke into his house, demanded valuables. What happened next is still under investigation by York Regional Police, folks. But the horrifying reality is that, as Joe Wilmington writes, "What did occur is horrifying for an innocent family who were minding their own business in their home in the middle of the night on the long weekend of summer 25. He was shot trying to protect his four-year-old daughter." Goodness gracious, this is happening in Canada. It's just so unbelievable. And yes, this happens all the time. This happens all the time in Ontario. As we saw, home invasion at a local Ontario inn leaves two assaulted and the suspects are still at large. A little motel in Renfrew, Ontario was also broken into over the weekend. Police say at 9:00 PM Sunday, officers responded to an inn on Gibbons Road after hearing reports that two males had entered a room, assaulted its occupants and used what was believed to be bear spray, soul-some property before leaving. This happens all the time. And so, yes, we need something more to protect ourselves. Our country is descending into chaos because of the Liberals. And so, for someone like Sean Fraser to say it's not the Wild West, you can't defend yourself in your home, is absurd and patently ridiculous. All right, folks, I want to take a minute to thank today's sponsor, which is Mackamie College. So Mackamie College has an applied politics and public affair program. It's a two-year evening online program available across Canada. Students have the opportunity to learn to run political campaigns, organize grassroots movements and push policy in the right direction. Students will also have hands-on placements in their community or with the party they believe in. So when they graduate, they have real job-ready experience. Applicants only need a high school diploma or homeschooling equivalent to apply. Intake starts in September and January. And folks, we are very excited to announce that anyone who applies and is successful in enrollment will get a $500 scholarship from Juno News. So apply using our link. It's in the description. You can go to candacmelcom.com/mackamy. That's M-A-K-A-M-I. And if you apply through that link and you're successful, you get a $500 Juno News scholarship. You know, I went to the University of Alberta and studied political science. And the thing you realize when you're doing a university degree is that it doesn't lead you to a job. And so, for me, after three years of being a political science student, I looked around and realized I had no job skills. I had never worked in politics. Everything was theoretical. It was all in the classroom. And I had to start working on political campaigns just to get my foot in the door. The hard thing about politics is that you need experience to get a job, but jobs require experience. And so, doing something like this, I mean, the fact that you can do it online, the fact that you can do it on the evening is really helpful. If you're interested in politics and you're watching the show, I presume you are. This is something that you really might want to consider or hey, maybe one of your adult children might be interested in doing something like this. So again, check out this link at candacmelcom.com/mackamycollege. And I'm pleased to welcome our guest on today's show, which is Erica Burridge. She is the Department Head of Applied Politics and Public Affairs at Mackamie College. She's a former Principal Secretary to Danielle Smith and the founding President of the United Conservative Party. Erica, welcome to the program. Great to see you.
Yeah, I'm very happy to be here.
Okay, I want to hear your opinion. I believe you are a gun owner. That's my producer's.
I am restricted and restricted. So I'm just so excited that this happened. I was like, where was this during the campaign? Because public safety was such a big topic and the fact that I think that would have been a big contrast to this Liberal government. Like Sean Fraser has two kids. How can you sit there, regardless of ideology, sit there and actually think, like, if someone came into my home, I'm not going to protect my children? Like, it's mind-boggling that this is even something that's being now having, like, having to talk about this. And those stories that you read, the stories Pierre talked about, I just, I can't believe we're in a world where we have to say, "People that went through their pal and our pal have a right to defend their house." Any Canadian has a right to defend their property is actually just mind-boggling.
Well, it's so true. I don't have a gun license. I didn't grow up, like, I don't have a background with guns. But I did go out and purchase a non-lethal gun because legally purchased through Canada. Because of these terrifying stories in the GTA about crime, it's not something that I ever expected to happen in Canada. And I feel like under the Liberal government, you sort of have this, like, toxic brew of, like, massive borders immigration, plus a revolving prison system, revolving door, bleeding herd justices, judges that just let criminals off the hook. And then on top of that, they are taking away gun rights and taking away legal gun owners' rights to defend themselves and then comments like this. It's just, it's actually unbelievable. And I think you're right that the public safety issue should have played a larger role in the election, Erica. I don't know what it's like in Alberta, but in Ontario, I feel like every time I'm talking to friends or talking, you know, at a family barbecue or at an event, everyone's talking about their fear of home invasions and carjackings. It's just become, it's just unbelievable that this is a major problem in the GTA. What is it like out in Alberta?
I mean, it's the same. I think we have a big conversation too around rural properties. And I know Alberta's put some things in place to look to protect rural property owners from people coming on, stealing or messing with big equipment. And those do not come with, you know, a low-ticket price. That's someone's livelihood if you're coming and destroying farm equipment or something to that effect. But regardless, I think it is a coast-to-coast issue of public safety. And again, like Pierre talked about making, like, we need to be in a place where villains are villains and victims are victims. And we've kind of flipped the script because of the Liberal government. So I'm really happy to see this. I'm really happy to see that they're carrying it forward. One, as a gun owner, to not feel in a country where we do have significant process. I mean, it's higher than getting your nexus to get your gun license and rightfully so. We have really great parameters on who should own a gun. But the fact is, if someone came into my house and I can only use my rifle for the back end to hit someone or to do anything to protect myself? I mean, like, there are stories where people are using any type of component in their house, kitchen utensils to protect themselves. And the fact that someone, it's violating on as-is to be in your home and have someone intrude, let alone hurt your loved ones. I just, again, I'm glad to see this. I am going to probably be very disappointed when the Liberals don't vote on side of this, even though I think that this is, you know, less ideological than the Liberals are making it out to be. It's about, like you said, people stealing cars and the message was to put your keys out at your front door in order to have the criminal, someone that's breaking the law, have access and ease to your personal belongings? Like, again, I just, I'm glad this is in place. I wish this would have come up in the election because I think, again, people that maybe aren't Conservative supporters can see the common sense that this is bringing forward to protect your own land and your family.
I saw a funny meme that was circulating on social media and it was like the difference between Americans and Canadians when it comes to castle law. And the Americans, they had, it was like, I don't know, maybe I'll try to find and get the guys to put it in post. But it was a sheriff saying, you know, "If someone breaks into your house, you should kill them and we prefer that you do. And we have courses at the local community center that will teach you how to use your firearm to kill someone coming into your house." And then it flipped to, you know, in Canada and it was a sort of infamous police officer, I believe it was in Etobicoke, saying, "Just leave your fobs at the front door so that when the criminal breaks into your house, they can just take the car and leave and they don't have to disturb you. You can just keep sleeping." And it's like, you know, just the mindset of, you know, in Canada, it's like, well, just give them your stuff and no one gets hurt. That's sort of what the Liberals are saying here. It's that, you know, you shouldn't be violent. Just because someone comes into your house to be violent doesn't mean that you should be violent back.
And it's not saying, I mean, I don't think the encouragement by the Conservatives is to use force and be violent, right? I mean, my dad lived in Louisiana for 25 years where everyone has multiple guns. They are all taught properly how to use them. I mean, it's very much like, it's also a sport larger down there. But you're right, like, they have that sense of security in their own home. However, in Canada, we're very different and this is not, it's apples to oranges on how our gun policy works. I'm very proud of our gun policy and all the hoops and bells and whistles I had to go through to become a gun owner. And I think that the society that we live in under this Liberal government is telling me like, "I'm a bad person and I shouldn't be doing this." Like, that's not the solution and it's not my intention of having it. A lot of us use it for the sport of guns and firearms or going to, like, clay shooting and things like that, that, you know, I don't know why we're feeling like horrible people or meant to feel like horrible people. And so, you're right, I've seen that meme. I think it's quite comical. I mean, I don't think we're encouraging Canadians to be at that root of, "Here, go get your gun and protect your home." But again, it comes back to like, the whole concept of this is you own your home or you live in your home. It is your safe space. You have your family there. You want to protect your family. I think anyone, any Canadian or anyone in the world wants to put that priority first. And the fact that we have a government that's limiting that is so disappointing, not just as a gun owner or as a Conservative, but as a Canadian, I can't believe that we're even having a conversation where we have to have and have people push back on the idea of protecting their own family, a family man himself, Sean Fraser. And I doubt that if someone was breaking into his home, he would be like, "Come on in. Let's have a cup of tea. Here's all my jewels or here's all my assets."
Exactly. And the idea is it is a last resort, right? Like, you're not out there swinging your gun around saying, "Come on in," right? It's like, if you're in a horrible situation, which I pray that none of us find ourselves in, but if something horrible like that were to happen, you know, it's, part of it is having the assurance of mind that, you know, I know how to protect myself and my family. But also just given the news and given what's happened in our country and in our cities over the last number of years, being secure in the fact that you know that you're not going to go to jail if some thug breaks into your house and you have to stop him using force before he gets to your children, heaven forbid. Okay, I want to move on and talk a little bit about what's happening in Alberta with the schools and the book bans. So a little bit of background on this. Earlier this year, the UCP government and Premier Danielle Smith announced a ministerial order effective October 1st, 2025, that all K-12 school libraries must remove books with illicit sexual content. And then there would be further restrictions coming in in January 2026. And so, there's been a lot of pushback. I know Nahi Nenshi, the leader of the NDP party, really opposes this. And they sort of tried to politicize it, making it seem like, oh, these Conservatives, they're bigots, they're trying to ban books. So Danielle Smith came with receipts. She showed up at a press conference on Friday showing the press and journalists exactly what she's talking about when she says which books need to be removed from kindergarten classrooms and K-12 schools. So let's play this clip of Danielle Smith on Friday.
Look, I think you're, I'm going to have to show the screen here because people aren't kind of getting what it is we're trying to do here. We are trying to take graphic pornographic images out of elementary schools so that kids are not exposed to age-inappropriate material. So I'm going to leave it on for 15 seconds. I'm warning you that the content may be disturbing and it's not appropriate for young users. Viewer discretion is advised. I know that the cameras probably can't print it on the evening news tonight without probably facing some kind of Broadcast Standards Council complaint. And I know that I would get delisted from Facebook for showing these kind of images on Facebook because they're pornographic. That is what we are trying to address. There's another one here. Please take a look at it so that, and I'd invite all of the school trustees to take a look at it too. We have tried to be as polite about this so that people understand what it is. Here's another one. So you can have another look at the kind of material that we think should not be exposed to young children aged seven years old. And I think we've got one more that we would like to show you as well. Here is another example. So I don't know how much more clear we could be that what we are aiming to, this all began because these were the images that parents were showing us that were accessible to children in elementary school libraries.
So it's just absolutely vile that seven-year-olds would have to see. I mean, we've blurted out, folks, don't want to expose you to pornographic images, but we're talking about like gay sex acts written out in children's novels and, you know, cartoon characters acting out like sexual acts and gay sex acts for small children. It's just, it's just so perverse. It shouldn't be controversial at all. And so, what ended up happening, well, this is sort of silly. So the Edmonton School Board took Danielle Smith's edict saying, "We're going to remove the pornographic sexual content from public schools and Catholic schools." And then they decided that they were going to remove more than 200 books from their library, including some very excellent books. Actually, I looked at the list here of some of the ones and these are all books that I read in high school, university, that I think everyone should read. So they're talking about Brave New World from Huxley, 1984, Dr. Orwell, Great Gatsby, Scott Fitzgerald, Alice Rudge, one of the best books that I read growing up, as well as The Had Man's Tale, you know, a book from Maya Angelou. So like, really just important mainstream books. It seems like the Edmonton Public Library was trying to, I don't know, combat Premier Danielle Smith. Maybe you can give us some further insight into what exactly is going on here, Erica.
Well, I would love to say that I understand the rationale of pulling all of these books off, you know, in resort. But the only image that comes to mind is like a toddler that gets their toy taken away and then says, "Oh, okay, then I'm taking all of the toys" and runs out of the room. Like, that's literally how I feel that Edmonton is handling this. I mean, to be fair, again, like, coming back, I don't want to sound like a pessimist when I'm consistently on the show, but it is, it's like, why is that the action that's taken? I have watched the Minister of Education roll all of this out over the last few months. It shouldn't be surprising of pornography, sexually explicit, like, the fact that a minister has to stand there and say, "Within the education system for our primary education levels, we have found that these are in the libraries and that kids can go and access them." And, you know, the fact that we're even there is one thing. I've heard from a lot of folks across all party lines of like, "I didn't know this was in the classrooms. I'm glad the government's doing something about them." I don't think it became a partisan issue. And now we have, you know, Edmonton taking a very political stance on this. And I live in Edmonton. It's quite disappointing. We had my stepchildren going back to school. Now thankfully, they're in 12 and 14 and they're not maybe exposed to the same situation. But we had a conversation with them and, you know, the fact that they would even see this is disturbing as a parent.
It's so disturbing. I mean, you have to really protect your children and almost have like pre-conversations with them about what they're going to encounter at school because it's so woke and so politicized and in this case, so sexualized. I mean, it's just silly because Edmonton Public Library, I mean, the way that this was covered, it was global news. Edmonton Public School Board is yanking more than 200 books from its library shelves this year to comply with provincial directive on banning books containing inappropriate sexual content. So even the way it's framed, it's like, this is to comply with the USB government. And again, using that term banning books, really, they're just removing books that are not appropriate. Here is Danielle Smith replying and slamming the school board, just saying that they're doing a little bit of vicious compliance here, trying to, I guess, embarrass Danielle Smith, but she flips it around and calls them out rightfully. Let's play that clip.
We ask school boards to use their discretion to identify books that might not be age-appropriate for elementary school children. And then to, and Edmonton Public is clearly doing a little vicious compliance over what the direction is. And so, if they need us to hold their hand through the process to identify what kind of materials are appropriate for senior high school students, what kind of materials are appropriate for junior high school students and what kind of materials are appropriate for elementary school students, we will more than happily work with them to work through their list one by one so we can be super clear about what it is we're trying to do.
So Erica, you know the premier quite well. She seems quite annoyed by this entire exercise. I mean, I think it's good for them politically, but what did you think of her response there?
I mean, wouldn't you be annoyed when you're bringing something forward and someone takes it so extreme and politicizes it and it's about children? I completely understand. Now, you know, I've sat in those rooms briefing her. Maybe that's not the tone you want to come across, but in fairness, I actually think that's probably the tone of a lot of parents hearing this. Like, to me, if the Edmonton Public School was not politicizing this, wasn't taking a woke agenda on this, wouldn't their list match every other school district in Alberta? And we haven't seen that. So why is Edmonton the only one with this robust list? To me, that screams and points to the fact that it's not meeting those thresholds of the government, but instead a political play that we're seeing. I mean, this is amidst the ATA that's based in Edmonton, fighting the government, walking away from the mediation table, potential teachers strike. Like, to me, this is a very, very hyper-political move by the Edmonton Public School Board. And to say that we have kids in the Edmonton Public, I will say, was quite disappointing.
Well, 100%. And again, the kids are the ones that get let down because they don't get to have access to these great books that every young person should read. And so, I.
I will give, I will give credit. We have one daughter that was in Edmonton Catholic last year and one of the teachers actually wrote home saying, "Some of the kids are bringing some of their novels to school from their home for our reading period." And they actually, you know, don't meet that threshold. We encourage, if you want to have your children read those books at home, that's fine, but they don't comply with what is part of our curriculum or what is within the requirements or age-appropriate books. And so, I will say that it's not a blanket statement on all education in Edmonton or Alberta. I think these are just, these are bad actors playing political. And so, we, I really appreciated that the teacher had shared that with us and just requested, "That's your choice as parents, but in the classroom, that's not appropriate."
Well, it's good to hear that there are still some good teachers out there, even in Edmonton. Erica, I want to talk to you a little bit about the Canadian economy because there was a report that came out last week that shows that, you know, the economy is barely chugging along and the private sector is in deep decline. So I want to share this stats can table. First of all, you can see this is 2025 so far. You can see that the overall economy, not good, but the blue line there is the public sector. We have not seen growth in the public sector at all since October 2024. And the only reason that we're not in a full-blown recession is because of the growth of government spending, basically, which is not a good way, not a good indicator for the economy. I'm wondering, like, what is your, what is your view? I know that the media will sort of blame this on trade and Trump, but I think that there's something deeper happening here. You can see it with the loss of investment into our economy. Billions of dollars are being pulled from bond markets. Like, it's not a rosy picture. It's pretty concerning for the future. What do you think?
Yeah, and I think that's where, you know, outlets like yours are so refreshing, where they're actually driving the facts and driving the actual current situation. Because if we go back six years ago, like, we were already on a decline. We were already accumulating massive debt, to your point, pushing money into public sector, thinking that that's job creation when ultimately it's just hurting taxpayers in the long run. And so, this is a, this is a decline we've seen. And I think the reason why we're, it's more top of mind is because of the tariffs that exposed how weak our economy actually is and has become in the last 10 years. It's limited interprovincial trade. It's limited our self-reliance. It's limited the ability for us to get our resources to market and be an international player. Instead, we crippled under, you know, the US relying solely on them. And under a Biden administration, you have an individual that's putting his own country first, like we should. And now we're in a situation where I think it is more top of mind to folks of how weak our economy was. But this isn't something from yesterday and it's not something that's changing tomorrow. This has been almost a decade in working to get our economy to be such a weak player in the even G7. And so, I'm not surprised. I think there's lots of people that thought that Mark Carney's resume, even though if you would have checked his references, they were probably not that great, but his resume was going to put us in a very positive economic position. I mean, he introduces an act that I will say I initially support, that's happy to see, the Build in Canada Act. But the devil's in the details and I think that's really going to limit what he can actually get for a return on investment on that piece of policy.
Well, at the end of the day, if you're unwilling to develop your natural resources, if you're ashamed of your natural resources, if you don't believe in pipelines and getting our resources to market, you know, it doesn't matter how many trade deals you sign or, you know, how well you do on the international stage. If you don't believe in your own economy, it's not going to go anywhere. I want to read a little bit from a CBC News article on this because I have to chuckle with the way that they frame it. So headline says, "Canadian Economy Shrinks 1.6% in Second Quarter As U.S. Tariffs Squeeze Export." So they're blaming it all on Trump and the tariffs. And then the byline sub-head here says, "Contraction Was Much Larger Than Expected, But Higher Spending Softened the Blow," right? So it's like congratulating the Canadian economy basically just for printing money and borrowing because it would have been much, much worse if it weren't for government spending. It says here that "The latest figures show the Canadian economy grew at an annual rate of 0.4% in the first six months of the year. The second quarter contraction was the first quarterly slowdown in seven quarters." So I mean, we're just barely avoiding a recession at this point. It seems to me that the only reason that we're not in a full-blown recession, again, is because of our massive government spending. Maybe that's why Carney blew out the budget so much. You know, everyone expected him to rein spending in, but instead he blew it out just like Trudeau did. What do you think?
Well, he blew it out farther than Trudeau. And I mean, if you're a news outlet that actually exists because of public sector investment by the government, of course, you're going to spin it that way. And I think that's a disservice to Canadians on what the actual facts are. Like I said, this decline is coming because, one, we were exposed. Two, I think that this was just inevitable based on the ridiculous spending and how we don't have stronger interprovincial trade, interprovincial deals and are actually looking at where do we create revenue? Justin Trudeau was horrible for it of hurting the West and limiting, thinking solar is going to be the only thing that gets us out of debt and deficit. And Mark Carney, you know, is very much the same. It's the same people at the table. And so, unfortunately, I think things may get worse before they get better because we don't have a government that puts money back in the pockets of Canadians, nor do they let industry and business create the revenue we very much need.
Well, that's so important, right? It's like, maybe we would have a stronger economy if we didn't have the government strangling every aspect of it and holding it back, right? It's not just the pipelines, this massive regulation, the red tape that are required. It's not just the pipelines, this massive regulation, the red tape that are required to do business in this country. All right, that's Erica Burrit of Mackamie College, former Principal Secretary to Danielle Smith and the founding President of the United Conservative Party. Erica, thank you so much for joining the show today.
Thank you for having me.
All right, folks, that's all the time we have for today. We'll be back again tomorrow with all the news.